Under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
I'm going to preface it.
Publication from the other side.
Yes, we have proof, but I'll have to look at it. Just make sure that it's out there. I don't have it on the agenda right here.
Okay.
We'll be fine then.
All right, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from our regular scheduled meeting, August 12th, as well as the budget workshops from August 13th, 14th, and 21st.
So moved, second.
All right, motion by Grooms, second by Abbott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stay.
Motion passes five to zero with one abstention. Let the record show Barbara Hollis is not with us this evening. Bear with me. I generally do not like running these meetings. Okay, amendments to the agenda. We have one additional appropriation request from the... Oh, no, that was part of the advertisement, right? Do we have any other amendments? All right, so the motion is as submitted. Motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Doherty, a second by Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like saying? Motion passes six to zero. Acknowledge of the funds reported.
Acknowledge.
Second. I'm not going to go down there. Not missing anything. Public comments. James McClure, Jr. The one and only, thank God.
James R. McClure, Jr., 1006 Hazelwood Court, Clarksville, Indiana. As I always begin, all lives matter. This, two weeks ago, the Indianapolis Capital Chronicle published an article about Jamie Knoll and the fact that he is eligible for two pensions in Indiana. One from the state for his time as a police officer and one from Clark County for his time as sheriff. In that article, they mentioned that the county government may, in the case of malfeasance of any person who had worked for them, confiscate in part or in whole any outstanding or possible future pension from someone who has pled guilty to a felony. I encourage this body to take this under advisement and if and when the current guilty plea is accepted by the court, to immediately seize or eliminate any and all possible pension funds due to known felon, philanderer, and all-around asshole Jamie Knoll because he stole hundreds of thousands of dollars from the citizens of Clark County and none of the citizens of Clark County should be on the dime for a single penny to this man should he ever leave prison. Thank you very much for your time and let's go Brandon.
Charlestown Fire Protection District, there's no appropriation requests.
I'm Ruben Cummings, I'm with GFC. I work with four of your fire districts and I'm here a lot with Charlestown. It seems...
Tom Luthen, I'm the president of the Fire Protection District of Charlestown.
So this is just an additional appropriation. You guys are the fiscal body for the fire districts because they're appointed boards of additional appropriations coming to you all for approval. Asking for 220 out of Hume Fire for truck payments, right, and 400 out of personal services out of general fund for additional personnel.
What's your... What was your levy rating on the 24th?
Man. I happen to have it on a different topic where we talked about it a few minutes ago. Tax rate, Charlestown, the 24 for the fire district, 1075. For the general fund, they do have a debt rate and a Hume rate. I'm going to my general fund.
What was your cash balance at the end of 23?
I have to dig that one out.
Okay.
I mean, I know, I know the answer. I mean, I don't know the number, but I know this is completely funded within cash currently and future revenues.
Cash balance from, that rolled over to the first of the year and then surplus revenue in the 24 budget. That's what you're saying, right?
Yeah, and also future, and then revenues in the 25 budget because of an increase that the commissioners approved and hopefully you all approved.
But this additional appropriation would fall off at the end of 24, so it doesn't help you in 25.
No, but the new budget includes the same payroll, the same personnel are in the 2025 proposed budget. This is to add personnel preparing for larger service in 25, am I right?
That's correct. Okay. Will your levy, as it stands now in 24, and then with the 4% growth quotient in 25, will that sustain this increase in payroll budget?
I'd have to do the math on that because the math for 25 budget is based on this 0660 rate allowance based on population growth with the township. There's a being, the county commissioners approved that and then went to the DLGF and got approved.
Okay.
They were allowed a, it's a formula from years ago when Charlestown was still, I mean, I've been watching, it was a state house, had to be a state house and they come up with a formula on a population growth in a 10-year window. If it's over 6%, then they're eligible for everything over that 6% because of the increase. So they got it a couple of years ago, like 6 cents and they're eligible again, they got it at 6 cents. So this budget is based on adding that 6 cents to the max levy.
Okay.
To fund what they're going, maybe 24/7 service everywhere.
This additional appropriation ordinance would be number 2024-20. I'll entertain a motion for this additional appropriation request from the Charlestown fire district.
Mr. Sherman, could you repeat? Yeah.
It's 220,000 in their cumulative fund, 1191, 220,000 for services and charges, which is for debt payments, and $400,000 for personal services in their special fire general fund, which is Fund 8603. So again, it's 220,000 for services and charges, lease payments, and $400,000 for personal services.
I want to make sure I understand this. We have the funds, the funds coming from where again? Where are the funds coming from? Where do you want to transfer from?
They don't need to transfer these additional appropriations. They're needing to spend more than their approved 24 budget.
That the additional appropriation would come from where?
Currently from cash. It's cash balance.
Okay.
You know, based on the future, they're going to have the revenue in 25 to make up the difference to keep a few more staff.
They're asking us to give them permission to spend their cash balance.
I'll make a motion to approve the 220,000 out of 1191 and the 400,000 out of 8603.
Second.
Motion by Doherty, second by Disney. Sorry, Abbott. Any other discussion? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Now I'm going to open up a public hearing for the binding units in Clark County.
I think they have one more thing.
You do?
Yeah, I'm on the agenda, the first three things I'm involved in.
Oh, maximum levy?
Maximum levy appeals. And I'm going to keep them up there for a minute. There are, there's a handful of levy appeals that are available to local governments and you know, some of the annexations in addition to services which don't affect us very much at fire, you know, fire will start adding MS which are not there yet. One of them is, there's a few that I check every year for every, you know, one is the population growth that I covered earlier. The other one is three-year AV growth. If the three-year AV growth is greater than the statewide three-year AV growth, more than 2%, that unit is eligible for a max levy increase, however much is above the max levy growth quotient. I know it's a confusing load of words, right? Which this year, this year was 4% as the growth quotient increased. As it turns out, all four fire districts I work with, Charlestown, Monroe, New Washington, and Utica are eligible for those increases. And to be honest with you, the DLGF still has not gotten back to me to determine who has signed the paperwork, so I was hoping to have it solidified by tonight, so at least I'm going to introduce the top two tonight since we're here. They have to determine, one, if it's the council, which I believe is this fiscal body. They said they're still trying, it's the commissioner. I think some of this stuff is still going back to when appointed boards got into this stuff, nobody's been eligible. I mean, there's been very few people eligible for these, for this appeal, so it's not going to come up. And then there has to be a signature from a fiscal officer. They're determining if that's the board president or the county auditor. So we're still working on some stuff. So at a minimum, I thought I'd bring it up and talk to you so we can start a conversation. Maybe most likely come back at the next meeting, but at least we can answer some questions and we can bounce stuff back and forth as you need it or want it. Anyways, the, so all four fire districts are eligible and so what I'm going to do, I'm proposing that, you know, an attitude of council would give us permission to put those appeals in. That would increase their max levies for all four of those districts and which just helps them operate. This fire, fire business is crazy expensive and you know, the 4% they're getting on levy appeals isn't keeping up unfortunately, so it's nice to have these tools and, and I'm not even saying that necessarily would be applied for immediately on the max levy stuff, but sure again, it's, you know, just like if the county's eligible, I would say absolutely go apply for it because you want, you know, you want to bank it in the future if you need it. So I have some paperwork if you all want it. It shows the numbers, what they're eligible for, how much the increase would be, and the percentage of change on it.
Good morning. You want my class, please? Thank you.
So I'll try to be quick with this. If you have any questions, stop me a little bit. Now, what you're going to see on Charlestown right off the bat is their rate is going up substantially more than the rest of them and that is because of that 0660 increase they got through the population growth because Charlestown is going nuts. So they have population growth, that was approved already, and they're also eligible for an AV appeal. So they may get a little more. So their, so their rate themselves is going to be a bigger jump. So column H would be their tax rate with this appeal approved. Column I would be their tax rate without the rate approved. J is their current tax rate. You can see if, if it's not approved, their tax rates are actually going to start dropping because the AV is growing so fast, their levy growth is staying behind. So the tax rate is going to start dropping pace. And then the second page, that will give you an idea of how much that tax rate is increasing as far as the total tax rate. Like in Monroe Township, it's a 0.45% increase to the total tax rate if, you know, the fire rate is that little bitty bit of it. So if you have any questions, we can discuss it. If not, I'll get out of here, but you can see a lot of stuff on the agenda and you're welcome to contact me, Danny and Lindsay, if you have any contact information or we can do whatever we need to do to discuss further. Again, because we're going to, we can't like sign anything tonight. I don't really expect you to. You know, once you think about it, research, whatever you need to research, contact me and we will, try to get this worked out. If we can get any time tonight's levy increases available for, for a client of mine, I tried at least the minimum, let's try to get it to the town.
Do you happen to have a number? How many, I know the apartments are going up quite fast. How many residents will we have? How many apartments are, are they adding, especially right beside the?
A lot. I don't have those. I didn't find a lot. I did population stuff.
Just want to make sure we had it covered, you know.
Well, that's, I mean, to give an example, in Charlestown, three, four years ago, we were in a commissioner meeting asking for the Hume fire rate to be re-adapted because back then the Hume rates would drop off as the AV went up. So we were reestablishing at the max. And that very night, there was like a 650 lot subdivision approved that night. Well, in fact, in those days, all those houses don't get captured because the rate drops off, you know, there's not much, the levy's going to increase, so the fire districts don't get the benefit of all the growth. So that's kind of what we're trying to pick up now is that huge growth, you know, your whole county is getting out of it.
One big issue, if I may speak, if we're running into as far as this hiring is because there's such a growth in job opportunities and fire suppression in this area right now where a lot of the departments are going professional. They're joining the PERF 77 fund, which is pension-based, so it is very, very hard to get personnel hired into a department like Charlestown. We don't offer 77 fund, which is what a lot of firefighters are looking for nowadays, is a pension. So that's where, that's where we're struggling and to be honest with you, we feel like that even with what is coming in, hopefully, that we're still going to need more. When we look at the price of fire apparatus, I can tell you that, I'm a major of Clarksville and we, we bought a new engine about three years ago and it's called a Fast Track, which is something that Seagrave just produces and they push it off the line as a basic truck. We paid about $560,000 for that truck. Three years later, that same apparatus is about $900,000 now. So the cost is just exponential what we're running into and that's the issue that we're having. And with the growth that's coming, I pray that we can provide the protection to these businesses that are coming to town, but...
I believe it's here.
Yes, and it's scary, you know. I've got 30 years in fire service and it's really unfathomable to me to see the growth that's coming and where we're at as far as fire protection. We've been a whole area, you know, it's not Charlestown, it's everywhere.
How many people are paid, firefighters that we have in Charlestown?
I believe as of today, it's either 15 or 16.
14?
Yes, here in the last two months, we have basically run from about four to that number. So, so these additional, this additional money is helping, but we're still quite away from being where we need to be.
Yeah, I kept him up here because he's already here. This affects all the three Utaid, New Washington, and Rob too, because they're all, everybody's training more towards at least having somebody in the building during workouts, one or two guys, you know, staffed five days a week, you know, 18 hours a day to, so you get trucks rolling. That's a big number just in salary loans. That's, that's kind of what we're after, just trying to make sure that they get that, that heard.
I've got this future son-in-law that's over at the J-Cow barn and they're always training. He's, the daughter's always saying he's always working. I'm just taking a minute. He's working good. I don't want to get on him about that, but he's never home. He says he's been training. I think they're doing dieting, you know, to learn how to come up on that.
Well, he mentioned the retirement. I got another fighter that I work with that's right now spending $200,000 a year for 10 years, took five back, all their PERF for the guys they've had there for 15 years already. They're putting them all in the PERF, buying it all back all the years.
He came about 10 minutes after Uncle Deliva delivered a baby. Just looking at him was with him, got that taken care of.
So yeah, anyways, you know, again, there's not much to be about that night. I was hoping there would be, but just till the DLGF says, can say exactly who has assigned what, can't do much, but at least open the conversation. You guys can look it up, contact me, you know, I guess whenever I get you, if you have any questions. And then soon be on the agenda for next month. It has to be turned in by October 21st anyway, so you have that meeting before that, it's a big five.
But Ruben, I want to take you back and somebody said though that...
Yep.
You were talking about maximum levy increases because there's so much growth.
Yep.
And if you have a lot of growth in your assessed value, specifically your net assessed value in the county, and a unit of government's budget isn't growing at the same rate NAV is, that's a good thing for the taxpayers though because their rate's going down. So I just wanted to share this number that I just looked up after you said that. The Clark County's tax rate, not the fire district, not City or Chad, not, but the government, the Clark County government itself as a unit of government, our tax rate in 2018 was .5544 and today in 2024, it's down to .3907 because our assessed, our NAV, our net assessed value in Clark County has grown at so much of a faster rate than the county's budget.
Yes.
So our, the tax rate, people, the proper tax rate people are paying was 41% higher just six years ago than it is today.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a good problem to have. It absolutely is. Your point is totally valid. As it grows, your tax, I mean, taxes probably don't change a whole lot, but taxes keep going there.
Certainly depends on...
There's a lot of factors, right?
A lot of factors. Look at your property tax bill. You need to look at all units of government changes because some rates are going up in addition to their assessed value going up. So that's where it hurts. All right, thanks, Ruben.
Yep.
Now, if you have anything at all, all right. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
We will continue muddling through this. I am now going to open up a public hearing for units of government, Clark County, Tri-Township Fire Protection District, New Washington Fire Protection District, Monroe Township Fire Protection District, Clark County Solid Waste Management District, Jeffersonville Flood Control, Utica Township Fire District, Charlestown Fire. And that's it. That last one was Clark County, which I already named. So, public hearing, does anyone have any public comments on the budgets that were advertised for these binding units of government? Any public comments on these budgets advertised for these units of government? Then I will close the public hearing. That's motion. That's its motion?
Yeah.
I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Disney, to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Have any questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for taking the time to go through that description of our taxes here in Clark County and we need to shout it from the rooftops that we've done a wonderful job of decreasing our tax rate here, keeping it lower than what most people would expect here in Clark County. So thank you for all your hard work and appreciate your definition of that. Few things on the agenda tonight and I'll go through them all up once and if you have any questions about them, I mean, stop me. If not, we can discuss it at the end. So we're asking for an additional appropriation for Biggs Road, Memphis Blue Lake Interchange. That was a study that was done by R.C.A.W. to try to look at that intersection, find ways to improve it. That's $50,000 additional appropriation. There's an additional appropriation of motor vehicles for $100,000 out of QCAP. That's our portion of sheriff's vehicles moving forward. If anybody recalls, five, six, seven, eight years ago, we were riding around in sheriff's vehicles that had salvage titles that we could hardly insure and we've gone on a pretty good program of rotating those vehicles in and out and making sure we give our officers something good to drive and something safe to drive. Asking for an additional appropriation, about two minutes, in the amount of $650,000. That's asphalt. Just to remind everybody, we try to pave about 35 miles a year here in Clark County. We've done a pretty good job of that, keeping out of that sap. An additional appropriation out of ARC for the Charlestown Waterman Extension to the tune of $1 million. If you all remember, we discussed this earlier this year, I believe. This is a waterman extension that goes from the intersection of Bethany and High Jackson, extends down High Jackson into the Shadow Lake area, but along the way picked up some of the subdivisions that had less than adequate diameter piping for fire suppression. So it was an economic development decision. It was a safety, it was a safety decision. So this cover covered all the parameters of what you would use ARC for funding for. Asking for an additional appropriation out of County General Unemployment for $15,000. Obviously we had more claims this year than what we expected. $30,000 for competency claims. These are for courts. I think at one time we were contracted to receive so many at a time and then after that, we had to pay additional fees for those competency hearings. The one that's probably going to be the most discussion is human resources. We're asking for a salary ordinance change for our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Goodwill is serving as our interim temporary HR specialist here at the Government Center.
All right, I think there'll be more discussion on that. Why don't you go ahead and take care of the requests we've gotten there.
Perfect, okay. Moving on to the enhanced GIS services.
Let's take care of the agenda items that you've covered.
Okay.
And we'll jump on the HR thing. I'll make a motion to approve additional appropriation in 1138 for $50,000 and $100,000. The additional appropriation for $650,000 in 1173. The additional appropriation for $1 million in 8950. And the additional appropriations for $15,000 and $30,000 and $1,000. Second.
Question. Did you, you mentioned our share, meaning the county share of the $100,000 for motor vehicles?
When I said our shares, meaning the commissioner's share out of Hume Cap toward the purchase of sheriff's vehicles, yes.
Thank you.
I should have said our as inclusive. I meant our as commissioners.
I thought so, but I wanted to be sure.
All within Clark County.
All within Clark County, our, yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I got a motion by Lunt for it and a second by Doherty. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to, would you like to cover the two below the salary ordinance and salary discussion? Okay, we can do that. If you look down past that, we're asking for an additional appropriation in contract services, the amount of $1496, $1,496. Those are increase in fees for the year 2024. Moving forward, we will budget for that moving into 25. You won't see that next year. Last is the additional appropriation out of lit into our group insurance of $500,000. This is typical for us to pay our group insurance out of lit. You want to handle those and then go into salary? Or what would you?
I want to talk about that. Edit, I heard, $500,000 for lit real quick. We have been paying for years, we've been using, it was traditionally called Edit. It's a local income tax, sorry. And that brings in 3.1 million and that has covered the employer portion of our county health insurance. We've budgeted 3.3 million for that this year already. It was originally approved all for, I think it was all for health insurance, I remember. So we are already spending, appropriating up to what we're collecting in that fund. There is a little bit of the cash balance, 1.1 million. If we appropriate this $500,000 to get us through 2024, and we continue spending this much on health insurance for county employees, we are going to need to find another fund, another source of money to bridge that gap between what Edit brings in and what we're spending for county health insurance because, is that 3.3 full? So we're now going to be at 3.8 million for 2024 with a fund that brings... full? So we're now going to be at 3.8 million for 2024 with a fund that brings in 3.2. So that's, that's concerning to me of needing in the future, either needing to adjust what we're spending out of this or find another revenue source.
Totally agree. And I think what we've done over time is we have looked for unique ways to help lower the burden of the insurance cost to the county. We've done a lot of work with Blumon and opening up the clinic. We've done a lot of things with Blumon in the matter of our biometrics to lower the cost of the county. I don't disagree with you at all. The, you're very limited as to what you can do. To be quite honest with you, you can continue to pay for out of edit. And as much as you hate to say it, you know, you can have an increase in, in what the employees pay to keep what the employer pays at, at the rate that it's at now. So I think it's probably a discussion that we need to have as to what, what direction the council and the commissioners would like to move to, to cover that gap. I, I've never been a fan of paying for it out of edit, but it's, it's the way it's been being a semi quasi self insured group. So point well taken. I think it's worth a, a discussion. I think we're looking for any type of guidance on that that the council may have and a way to help fund that. But we have really done a good job of keeping those rates down. And we've done everything we possibly can to minimize our risk and keep those, keep those claims down also. So point taken. I don't have a short answer for you, but it's worth a discussion.
So the others offered to put together an estimate for 2025, and it's around 3.7 million. And I think, again, I mean, the revenue in that lit, lit fund is 3.12 this year. And I think it gets close to 3.3 for 2025. So our cash balance after this additional $500,000. And then at the end of next year, a 3.7 million expense, what 3.3 revenue, our cash balance will be zero in edit for 20, starting with 26. So we'll have zero cash balance and probably looking around 3.4 million in revenue. And if we're still spending upwards of 3.8, well, so 2026 is where we'll really either be making some adjustments or find another revenue source.
Agreed. Agreed. And I think too, it's, it's worth mentioning, I don't know how much of the $500,000 appropriation will be carried over into 2025. I think that's just to bridge the gap it is through this year.
Oh, I know. Unfortunately, yes, you're right.
So I guess you shouldn't have said it that way. But yeah, we, we're hoping that bridges the gap this year. Absolutely.
Okay. So that's definitely something the council commissioners need to work on for next, next year.
And I'll be honest with you, I think when we do that, Brian, it's probably worth having. Sure partners here to kind of look through some of the options that we can come up with. I'll be honest with you, we've been extremely creative over the last four, five, six years trying to come up with plans that are customer, we call it customer driven healthcare. It allows that person to really pay what they think they can pay to, that's feasible for them. Sometimes it lowers the cost for the employer and employee. I'll say, you know, I don't have any other creative ways to come up with bridging that gap, to be quite honest with you, as much as I hate to say it.
I'll make a motion to approve additional appropriation of $1,496 and fund $4964 and the $500,000 in 1112.
Second.
Motion by Lintford, second by Miller. Any other discussion on that?
Hey, Brian, who's our agent of record?
That's Assured Partners.
Really?
Assured Partners.
Oh.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, back to the human resource.
Human resource. As everybody knows, Karen Goodwell has graciously stepped into the interim HR director position as of around August 1st. She served as well in the past. She's serving as well now. We're paying her on a part-time basis. We would ask that you all approve the $34 per hour interim pay for her until we find a new HR director that will come on full-time. We are looking, well, we're actually doing interviews this week. Looking to fill that position as soon as possible. And I'll call, Karen's more than welcome to come up here and add to this discussion. I think it's worth discussing that as, as everybody comes to you and tells you that the cost of doing business is getting costly. Our HR director, I think is approved now for $80,000 is what is in the salary ordinance. And we're asking for a little bit of latitude on that, up to $85,000. As people come in with qualifications, degrees, insurance, all of these testing and credentials and qualifications, it costs us to have somebody that is professional enough to cover 550 employees that this county has and keep everybody's human resources and benefits and all those things aligned. So sometimes we struggle to even find people to apply for these jobs with our salary limits. And when we do walk in, when they do walk into the door, a lot of times they're bumping against our max just to walk into the door. So we're looking for a little bit of flexibility there and would like to see if the council would agree to increasing that to $85,000. And with the understanding that that's not the first offer that we make to qualified candidate. Obviously, we're, we're fiscally responsible and we try to get as much as we can for as least as possible. But it's, it's different, just to say it's different.
I mean, so you can go up, you can go up with any, ask for a question, you can tell me on the spot, helps you the most. We've been, I'll be honest with you, we've, we've been extremely fortunate that obviously Karen told us, she wanted to retire. We, we, we went begging and pleading and asked her to come in and enter a position. And she's graciously accepted that. And if not, we would be, we would be hurting right now. She's done a wonderful job stepping in. She knows this business. She knows county government. She's dealt with you all for years. So it was an easy transition. But, you know, she doesn't want to stay around forever. So we've got to transition into that next phase. So although that she's back, it's been very calm. We'd love to keep her around for another 25 years, but I don't know that Karen is willing to do that. So.
So you're asking for a salary ordinance of $44 per hour. No money because there's already money in the budget for part-time and could even be transferred out of salary payroll services over to part-time.
That's correct.
Because it's not being spent.
That's correct.
Okay. Are you asking, so the current salary ordinance for this year, I think is 77,250.
Yeah.
And then the request for, starting in 25 is 80,340.
80,340.
Are you wanting, are you asking the council to change the current salary in 2024 or to change what you're requesting in 25? I'll let Karen come up here and ask that.
So as of now, I've been putting in very bad 40 hours just to catch up. This is our open enrollment season will be coming up. This is the busiest time of the year for HR. My hope is that we'll get someone soon, but I also hope that there will be at least a minimum overlap so that I would have an opportunity to train that person. So ultimately, I think we may need to exceed that amount that was set for the salary of the.
For the current year?
Yeah.
Of the 77,250.
Like I said, I wasn't sure when I came in, how many hours I've been up, pretty much been doing 35, 40.
I, I think there's enough money in the budget to cover the needs. It's the rate you're wanting to pay someone between now and the end of the year. I think you're going to have enough appropriation to cover it. And there's probably enough, another lines to transfer if, if you're, it's going to be really close.
It's going to be close.
So I just wanted to zero in exactly on.
And I think it's twofold.
The issue with Andy here is, I, I think you're wanting us to adjust the rate of the position.
In 2025.
In 2025? Okay.
Maybe for the sheriff. We just don't know. It just depends on when someone can start.
Okay.
And how much of an overlap we can have, which I would recommend some. And if it happens during the middle of enrollment.
Well, we're having another budget workshop next week. We can absolutely discuss this for the 25 rate. If you're wanting us to change to 24, that, that actually needs to be taken pretty much now or at the October meeting this morning too.
Well, as I said, we're just now getting into interviews. I would, I would doubt that we would hire somebody before the first, it would probably be a start date around the first of October, somewhere in that time frame.
Okay.
So we do have a window there of guest years.
I think you're going to be fine to get through the end of the year and then, and we can discuss the 25 rate in the budget workshop next week.
Fair enough. Just, I think our, our, our discussion today was again, just to introduce that, just to hit that thought. I mean, it's just, we're, we're no different than anybody. It's difficult to find qualified people. When you do, you, you've got a panel appropriate. So, fair enough?
Yes.
Did I say that how you would say it?
I think so.
Okay. So we're good with the $44 per hour. We believe we have enough money in there.
Money in. Okay. I'll make a motion to set the part-time rate in the Human Resources Location 52, County General, $44 in that.
Second.
Motion by Lintford, second by Abbott. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Awesome. Thank you all very much. Appreciate the discussion.
Thank you.
We didn't have a rate established in the salary ordinance for that part-time money in 24.
I don't transfer the part-time money out.
Okay. Well, they'll, they'll be able to transfer from payroll services to part-time.
Yes.
They transferred it out? Where'd they transfer it to?
Where are we supposed to transfer that out?
It looks like they did it to contract services.
Yeah.
Was that done under the idea that the interim would be brought in under a contract?
I don't.
I think that was before.
That was done before.
Yeah. That might be AOD maybe.
Possibly.
Hmm. That's, that's just me.
All right. They'll, they'll be enough on the payroll services to transfer. But yeah, that didn't, that wasn't, there's no rate established that I can see on the salary rules. Okay. What do we got? Sheriff?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Diane from the Sheriff's Department. And we only have two things on the agenda. The first one is from the 1191, $100,000 for the vehicles. And that was all part of the Q cap that we were supposed to get in the beginning of the year. That was $199. So that was $700,000 from earlier plus this $100,000.
The $100,000 we just appropriated from Q cap through the commissioner's office and now Riverboat.
So that totals that $199 that we were approving the budget.
Right.
The second thing is another grant that we received and it's for mental health equipment and supplies. And so we were just appropriating that grant at $20,000 for equipment and $10,000 for supplies.
Lindsay, where do you show that we have Riverboat at?
I haven't received it. We just received the 2025 distribution and it actually hasn't been seeded yet.
In the financial system.
Right. It is an ACH, so it takes a day.
Yeah. So I show our 2024 revenue is going to be 165,000 for the year, plus our 125,000 cash balance we started the year with, gets you 291,000. We've appropriated 127,000 so far this year, leaving a, a balance of 164,000 to be appropriated.
And as of tomorrow, when I receive it in, it will be 206,000.
I see you. See you Wednesday. I'm making a motion to appropriate, to approve additional appropriation of $100,000 in 1191, additional appropriation of $20,000 and $10,000 in 9134. Second. Motion by Lintford, second by Dory. Any other discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Health Department.
Good evening, Senator Parkdale. It's I'm asking for an additional appropriation on 159, which I'm trying to offer you. In this situation, we're asked for $12,000 in additional appropriation. We have an EMS ordinance that has to be renewed. Last time it was done in 2014. We have our Frost, Brown, Todd, who represent the health department. They're willing to give us their expertise to make this happen. Want your next one? The FSA gave a grant we got. We had gotten some guidance from state board of accountants. They've asked us to basically transfer 67,622 from personal services, $3,778 from FICA, $7,246 from computer software, and $22,000 for vehicles into a new category called subrecipient agreements. Basically, what we're doing is this FSA gave health company money and we sub how to provide as well organizations. So technically, it's all of it called our service. That's it.
What is a subrecipient agreement?
So we have the grant, the FSA do certain programs. But we have contracted that out to, in this case, Swire, who will run from behalf of the health department. So they essentially are now a contractor of the health department. So basically, it's a way to get a, deal with how we're transferring the money that's paying for personal services that aren't the county's personal services. It's a contractor of the services. Basically, it's, Ruben, it's a pass you bring.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the $12,000 out of 1159 for legal fees, to transfer appropriations for personal services of 67,622, FICA drive, 3778, computer, 7246, motor vehicles, $22,000 into the subrecipient agreement.
Second. Motion by Dory, second by Miller. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Good evening, Tom Wild, Court Administrator. We have a request for additional appropriations from ADR. Personal services, $260.64, FICA Medicare, $19.50, and 3287. The shortfall was when Debbie Cooper retired and we made temporary salary ordinance so that Adrian could get trained, buy better before she was, and created this $320 shortfall. The ADR funds are generated out of court costs and divorce cases.
There's a smile. I think it's supposed to be a smile.
Are you doing the youth coalition zone?
I don't know what you think about that. I'm not even sure.
Oh, there you go. All right, very good. So we're just looking at the 2202.
Correct.
Got it.
Motion temporary, the additional appropriation to 2202.
Second. Motion by Dory, second by Miller. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All right, opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Adrian, do you think he had it? She is small. She's small.
I'm Tony Shepherd with Clark County Youth Coalition.
I'm Tony Shepherd from our county youth coalition. We're here to request the appropriations from the drug-free community fund into our four mandated groups to then send out to our recipients.
And Tony, where does this money come from?
It comes from the governor's drug-free initiative, it's paid to the courts.
Great. Good.
There are, all the claims are the same, descriptions is basic. At least for different individuals.
Yes, they are. We have four mandated categories that the coalition then entertains grant requests and we then divvy out that money to those grant recipients based on the categories.
Are these required?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I move that is our pre-community additional appropriation of 1148 for $6,096.4 $6,096.4 $6,096.4 $6,096.4 be approved.
Second. Motion by Gru, second by Miller. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Wait some minutes.
I want to extend her again today.
What's this about, what freight, freight are you talking about?
Freight, oh, to send, I have to take all my equipment to Ingris, Louisville.
You said that, yeah.
They cannot test it there, so they ship it out, they put on a big pallet, ship everything out. And I have 650 pounds of weights and then a weight kit, 30 pound weight kit and a gram kit. So it's a lot of weight.
How long does it take to get it back?
Yeah, I don't know that. But right now I'm doing fuel stations so they can keep my weights for a while. I don't need them yet until it gets colder weather. But I'm requesting, Lindsay help me with this, because she transferred some of these.
Yeah, we appreciate you finding money already in your budget to transfer instead of doing.
Lindsay did that.
Good job, Lindsay. I'd like a motion to approve the additional appropriation for 49860 and freight fund of 1,000 and then transfer appropriation of 2,540, 15140 and 9860 into freight and equipment repair.
Second. I'd like to comment on when I saw this lady working the other day. She was, she was at work during her job, it was very interesting. She was at a service station getting gasoline from, from gasoline pumper, putting it into a cylinder to hold that, it said one gallon.
It's five gallons.
Five gallon.
Five gallons.
And to watch her work is, is very interesting. She's so thorough and so technical.
I have system down.
That was just, I thought you did, you were doing a super job. Now this lady loves her job.
I do, I do love it.
I could tell from the way you were.
I noticed today, I'm sorry to keep up with some of these fuel stations. I noticed today in Charlestown, Circle K, I was parked by the diesel pump. And I looked at the length and measure sticker and it said, typical canoe. Doing some inspection. So they bought this pump from way up there, so 192 miles away. They didn't call me and let me know they had a new pump, and I said, you're supposed to let me know so I can retest it. Because they got rid of their old one that I tested in the spring where I got this one.
Did it fail, that's why they got a new one?
I haven't tested it yet, I was just there.
Okay, did the old one fail, which is why they had to get a new one?
No, it was just real slow.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just old.
All right, I got a motion by Lymphord, second by Doherty. For additional appropriations and transfers in 1,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Veteran services.
I tried to get you a grant that day, but then they said that there wasn't any available.
Say again?
I tried to get you a grant, you know, we talked about grants for you last week? I tried to get you a grant with River Hills and they said there wasn't any available.
You did, didn't you?
O'Ronnie Leach, yes, here in the veteran services office. Here for, requesting for transfer appropriations from 30013 to 40014 to help with purchase of an equipment that would help us organize and better communicate with our veterans as they check in and waiting on waiting rooms and stuff. But get us a better understanding too of what they're there for. So that way we can streamline our process and get the right amount of time and minutes. A little bit of our, you know, calendar schedule to squeeze them in. But this would help communicate back and forth.
Is this that kiosk we talked about?
Yes, perfect kiosk for the reception.
Motion to approve transfer appropriation, 1,000 travel for 677 cents into same fund for equipment.
Second. Motion by Miller, second by Doherty. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Auditorial office.
Yes, I have one thing for you this evening. This is out of our 416 eligible deductions. It's for our portion of the Eagleview pecuniary where they do the flyover, if you ever go on there.
Is that for elevate?
Yes, yeah. It's our, it's our portion, we share. Auditor, plan commissioner, assessor, commissioners, Madam One, City Jeff, Town Clerk, State County Attorney. That's our portion.
Motion to approve additional appropriation for our auditor's, the number of inducted fund, 1216 contract services for $6,000.
Second. Motion by Miller, second by Gru. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries six zero. November meeting date.
We were just keeping that on there to remind ourselves that the meeting was on Veterans Day, the scheduled meeting.
The plan is also to move it to next meeting so that we can have, again, a better accurate understanding of where we're at. So just keep this on there and do an energy motion to handle for next year.
I don't think there's, it's even, if you don't want to, you don't have to do that. Just keep this all business. Reports and comments. Any other public comments? Anybody?
Sure. Appreciate all of you and listening tonight, I think y'all did a, done a good job. Appreciate you bringing up the point about the property tax, as I like, appreciate that.
When I look back at my number, I should have rounded up to 42%, because it's like 41.89.
Okay, here was always best bank for your job, you did a good job with that.
Any other audience? Attorney comments?
Health fair. Health fair, fair is coming up September 18th.
Employee appreciation health fair, I hope all of you can come.
So that's, so what date is that?
September 18th.
Okay, and then we scheduled a budget workshop that same day. So we'll be in here that morning.
Nine through 11:30.
Nine, 11:30?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So we'll be in this room for a budget workshop to go over a few departments budgets like we did a couple weeks ago for three different sessions. So then we can wrap up with our budget workshop and then hit the health fair while we're here.
So we'll tell the DJ at 11:30 the soft, with soft music if you're still meeting.
Yes.
Right.
Cast comments? And I wish Barbara Hollis is in recovery, I hope she can feel better because I really do not like doing this job.
You're doing a fine job.
I need to tell me Dan Moore's wife, that's the way he has to, breast cancer, normal judge. All right. What do you say? Okay, motion to adjourn.
You know, it's a debate.
I'll make motion. Second. Oh, before we do. No, I think that. You're just wanting them to sign. No, I have nothing to say yet. Okay. Motion second, all those in favor adjourn. Aye. Six zero.